It's six o'clock, and I'd like to call to order Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. If you would please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, I ask that we all please remain standing for a moment in remembrance of Fire Marshal Lucas Shepard, who passed away unexpectedly on March 14th, just last Friday. So we'll just have a brief moment of silence. Please be seated. Ms. Hunter, please call the roll.
Chair Keeney.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner Sylvester.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Stratton.
Here.
Thank you. And I want to welcome both of our new members to the Commission, Catherine and Alyssa. It's really exciting for me to see the new wave come in our public servants. And I really want to thank you both for stepping up. And Amy, you've been on the Commission for a while now, but you actually are part of that new wave. And so it really is, you know, it's just great for me to see younger people taking an interest in doing this kind of work. And I hope that you enjoy it as much as I have. You take pride in your work. The only tip I have for you here at the beginning of your, you know, service here with the city on the Planning Commission, you know, you were chosen because of your experience and your intelligence. And so you will be reading staff reports and coming, you know, with your own ideas, which we want to hear, but always come with an open mind. In my very first meeting, I changed my vote based on public comment. And so it can happen, and just make sure that you're open to that. And I think you'll both be great successes. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Item number two is closed session report, which we have none. The next item is the adoption of agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion, but I just noticed the roll call actually lists the, did you see that too? Okay. So, motion to adopt with amended roll call names.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. That passes five zero. Next item is our consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the Commission, staff, or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. And on our consent calendar is approval of the minutes from our meeting of February 18th. Does anyone want to pull those minutes for further discussion or any changes?
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt from Amy and a second from...
Second.
Second from Alyssa. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We had no items pulled from our consent calendar. We move on to number seven. This is items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits the Commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the Planning Commission under specified circumstances. At this time, would any members of the public like to come to the podium and speak to the Commission? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to number eight, written communications on non-agenda items.
We have none.
And we have none of those. Next is item number nine, presentations and educational workshop sessions. And tonight we have 9.1. This is from Marshall Hospital regarding parking. And the parking presentation, we were provided tonight with the summary slides, correct?
Yes. So I'll provide a little bit of background and then pass it over to Marshall.
All right. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter.
Yes, you were provided copies of the presentation prior to the meeting. Copies are available at the back counter as well for the public. So in October of 2024, the Development Services Department approved two special temporary use permits for temporary off-site gravel parking lots. Both approvals included a condition requiring a presentation to the Planning Commission and City Council to provide an update on Marshall's parking plan analysis. The last update of that plan was in September of 2021. This is a receive and file for the Planning Commission. And with that, I'll pass it off to Marshall.
Good evening.
See if I can do this here. All right. My name is Tac Saito. I'm the Director of Support and Facilities at Marshall. And I just introduced my company here. I have Kay Ida. He represents security for our facility. Of course, parking and security kind of go hand in hand. And Frederick Venter, he's our civil engineer that's been supporting our parking program. And he's with Kimberly Horn. Okay. Yeah, so this evening, we just wanted to give you an update of parking at Marshall. And I'd imagine if you're up at the campus, you're going to either find it easier to find parking it or not. So we've been spending the last few years actually studying our parking and making sure that we're providing adequate parking for our patients and our staff and our physicians. So we'll give you a little insight of where we've been and where we're going, and then we'll take some, any questions you have afterwards. Okay. Okay, so what we're going to cover tonight is, you know, where we have been. There's been, this topic has been ongoing at Marshall and with the Planning Commission dating back to 2019. So we'll give you a little refresh on some of that, kind of where we're at now. And that's where Frederick's going to come in and share a bit about some of the study work he's been doing for us over the past three to four years, and then some of the things we're doing to manage our parking going forward. And so that would be essentially what we'll cover tonight, if that sounds okay. Okay, so this was before I got here, but back in 2019, Marshall came to the Planning Commission. At that time, they were talking about some expansions that they were considering at the site. And so if you can see the map here, there's actually four locations where there was a consideration of supporting some parking to a building that is somewhere between 50 and 100,000 square feet. That never really realized, and so we didn't add the building. And at this point, we'll talk a bit about the parking, but that was kind of a joint parking, building combination. I think at the time, this was pre-COVID, and we're going to talk about how COVID affected us pre-COVID, there was, you know, some challenges with parking at the site. And so I think that was also causing some concern about how much parking we have for our patients and our staff. And so, so as you see here, there was, there was actually four options for where we might have sighted a building and a parking structure. None of those actually got realized. And then there also was, and there's a letter here that you can't really see very well, but there was a letter from our CEO at the time that was talking about a, maybe a surface parking lot that we were considering putting in. And again, that was, that was, they were actually very serious about doing that. Then COVID came, and then that didn't, that actually didn't happen. So, so anyway, now, now I'm going to bring Frederick up here because he's been studying, it seems like COVID was a long time ago, but it really wasn't. And so he'll be telling you what's been going on since then. Okay, Frederick?
Thank you, Tac. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and talk a little bit about parking at Marshall. So COVID changed our lives a lot. I'm pretty sure we all, and we still, there's still repercussions of it, right? So since then, COVID happened, a lot of people started working from home, and Marshall realized, you know, maybe we should continue some of that phenomenon of people working from home. And, you know, we still have people coming in and working, working part-time at the hospital and part-time at home. And then, so we started doing some parking count and collecting parking count data at the campus, right? So I'm going to share with you data that we collected between 2022 and 2025. And the results really indicated that a parking structure is not required. And I'm going to share a lot of the demand and the supply data with you. And the important thing is here was, here's what we did for Marshall. We said, it comes down to right sizing your parking, right? Instead of saying, well, there's just a requirement, and you need to build something, and people use it, what we do is we go and see actually what's the real demand. So you mean, you count the cars, and you look at what your supply is. So how many parking spaces are you actually having on the site? And how can you better manage parking to really optimize the use of the parking spaces that you do have? So that's what we're going to present to you tonight. What is right-sized parking, right? So it is providing additional parking spaces is prohibitively expensive. Right now, you know, and especially Marshall is on hillside. So it's not just that you just go and pave and stripe, right? There's retaining walls, and there's lighting, and, you know, so right now, you're close to about $18,000 a surface space. And if you build a parking structure, those are touching $50,000, $60,000 a space. So it's a significant investment, right, to build parking facilities. In parking, when we do parking analysis, we talk about 85% occupancy as the sweet spot for parking, right? And the main reason for that is if you have 100% occupancy, people need to start driving around looking for parking space, right? And then they get frustrated. So, you know, and they get unhappy, they call the CEO, they call the city and say, hey, we can't fight parking, something is wrong. So 85% is the language we use in parking management and occupancy as a sweet spot. However, for staff, so remember, staff comes in in the morning, and they leave in the afternoon, and there's also a shift change at three o'clock, but they park all day. So it is okay to have a higher parking occupancy for staff because they come, they park, and then they go walk, and they come, they walk to the hospital, and they come back, and they go home. We looked at the parking occupancies, and especially when it's higher than 85%, that's when we got to start, really start managing parking. And that's what we're going to talk about here. We also found that staff parks inappropriately, so they park in patient lots, right? So that's something that we're going to address, and we're going to show you how we're addressing that. And of course, you know, we, we love our cars, and we like to park right in front of the door, right? And we, you know, so we, having to park a block away and walk is no fun, and we, it's almost like we annex that, even if it's a city street space, we like it in front of our house, right? This, I'm going to share with you a map that shows where the hospital acquired and expanded surface parking at Lot 12. So that's the furthest away from the hospital, and you will see from the data it's not being used. And part of the program that we're going to have in managing parking is incentives and programs to help staff actually park in Lot 12. We talked about 85%. So this is a map of the campus. So sort of in the middle, you can see where the hospital is with available parking in that immediate vicinity all around the hospital. And then all the little patches is, the smaller patches on the north end is all like MOB buildings. So those are smaller buildings that the hospital own, and they have, some of those have patient facilities, and some of those only include staff in those places, and they do just do works like HR sits there and DAX sits there. And then you can see there's a couple of spaces that's just parking only. So these are parking lots, right? And blue is staff parking, and green is patient parking, and we have a couple of lots that shared between staff and patients. In February 2025 is when, the last time that we counted, so it's a couple of months ago. And you will see that the total supply for the campus is 772 spaces. So between that map that I just showed you, when we added up all the spaces, 772. And then what we do is we count in the morning between 10:00 and 11:00, and the afternoon between about 3:00 and 4:00. Those are typically the peaks of hospitals, right? So in the morning, patients would come in, and all the staff is there. In the afternoon, there's a little bit of a shift change, there's also visiting hours. So we do capture the peak demand in the day, and that's, we have your AM and PM peaks. So you can see the patient demand in the morning is about 75%, right? When we look at all the patient parking, and the staff is at 82% in the morning. And then in the mixed zones, mixed parking area is 36, and the total was about 79% overall for the campus in the morning. Afternoon, it goes down a little bit to 79%. But look at that last row of available spaces, right? 165 available spaces in the morning and 182. Now, if you quickly want to turn the dollar amounts that I told you earlier, right, you get to a good $20 million, $30 million here for, that is an investment already made, and we have the spaces available, so we got to try and use it better, right? This is just a bar chart that just shows the numbers on the previous table. I want you to maybe look at the last blue lines and the green lines. So that again shows the demand, right, in the blue. The green is the available spaces, and the totals are at the top, right? So again, 165 and 182. So I mentioned to you that we did some counts between 2022 and 2025. You will see that there is slight growth between August, between 22 and 2025. It varies between 2% and 6%. But we're still under 80% maximum for the entire campus, right? So we are within that range of less than 85% for the entire campus, which is very important. The bar charts on the right just showed staff and visitor parking by, by, by the color codes. So here's what we call a heat map. So the, what the heat map shows you is how full is the, or are the specific lots on the campus. So what we did is if there's a lot that you see that has a blue outline, it is a staff parking lot, and the color inside it is coded by occupancy, right? So if it is a red zone, right, or red coloring in the, in the polygon, it means that the parking demand is over 85%. If it's orange, it's between 75 and 85%. And if it's green, it's less than 70%. So, and then, sorry, and then on the right-hand side, you will see there's Lot 12. And Lot 12 is sort of where the arrow is, it's sort of at the bottom. So that's the one that's a little furthest away from the hospital. And of course, you can see it's green, right? So that's the least favorable lot for people to park in and walk to the hospital. And of course, you can see the, especially the patient lots closest to the door, to the front door, is red, right? And then the two big staff parking lotses are those two big ones on the right and south end, so it's, and you can see they are red as well. There are two lots on the north end. It's Lot 6, and there's a blue, a big blue lot that says contractor lot. Those are the two temporary lots that Kristen spoke about where the hospital has temporary permits only because those have gravel surfaces, and, you know, technically speaking, the hospital cannot use them. But we've applied for this temporary permit because until we have this parking permit program and the management plan in place, you know, those, those lots are going to be used, and the staff really wants to park there. So that was the morning peak hour. This is the afternoon peak hour, about the same colors. So what we did is we said, okay, well, Tac, you know, look at the parking demand here, right? How can we manage parking better to have a better distribution of the demand, right? And what we did then in the morning, we said, let's reallocate some of the parking, right? And number one is we did pick up that staff actually parks in the visitor lot, so those ones closest to the front door, you know, sort of inappropriately, right? So what we did is we saw a license plate in the morning, and we saw a license plate again in the afternoon. You know, it's, yes, we do have patients that sometime park the whole day, but very seldom do we see patients or visitors come in that park the whole day. So we removed those and then said, where can we park them? And we moved them primarily to Lot 12, right? So what happens with the reallocation is now you see Lot 12 on the right-hand side goes to orange, right? And then a lot of the other lots goes to orange as well. Staff stays at the red lots, right? So they stay above 85%. This is for the AM peak hour, right? And then for the PM peak hour, we did the same. So you can see a lot more orange and not as much red closer to the hospital, and it's only because we moved staff to Lot 12. So in summary, as you know, the Marshall Medical Center parking demand has been increasing slightly. We showed you those numbers from 2022 to 2025. But these are only marginal increases, and it's really because of bed sensors, right? The moment the hospital has more beds, they bring in slightly more staff just to help with patient care. The fact that we have a surplus of 165, see, 165 parking space in the morning and 180 in the afternoon tells us we don't need more parking, right? So we don't want to build a parking structure. We don't want to build more surface parking, right? It's cheaper to just manage your parking better and optimize the use of the available spaces that you do have. We do recognize that staff and visitors do want to park as close as possible to the front door, and they, they want to avoid walking. So, so the result is definitely higher demand closer to the hospital and lower demand further from the hospital. And we do picked up, we did pick up where staff parks, they spark inappropriately in the patient lots. Tac?
All right. Thank you, Frederick. Yeah, so let's see here. Okay, so just to reiterate on the temporary use permits that were granted about a couple months ago, it's our intent to only temporarily use them as we're working to manage our existing spaces, but it's going to help us out quite a bit during this period. And we've addressed, we feel, we addressed all the conditional items that were on it. So we're opening, one was already kind of in use, another one we did some work to, and it's now, it's reopened this week. And so I think the other thing is, and both just for your knowledge or at least, so we're taking it year to year. And I won't go through it, but this is essentially the, kind of a layout for the two parking lots. They, they actually hold quite a few vehicles, and so they are helping us out at this point. So I just wanted to, wondering, what is Lot 12? Because you probably will never see it because it's an employee lot. Back in this, Frederick was showing you, but way on the bottom right is where Lot 12. It looks really far. It's not actually real far, but it was intended for staff parking. It's, it's our plan to, and it's on Washington. Our plan is to, you know, make it more desirable to park in. What we're going to move to, and we are moving to, is not having so many lots that have direct assignment. We just essentially have three types of parking lots. One is for physicians, so it'll be physician parking. Second is, of course, for the patients, which are up close to the building. And then everything else is staff. And so what we're doing right now, and Kay's working on this now, is to get everybody a new decal, one that's attached to the glass, so you're not, you know, transferring it or hiding it when it's time to park. And then so we're reissuing all the parking decals. And then we're also going to be from there, like I said, they're going to be simplifying the, the division of the different parking spaces, and then more enforcement. And that is going to be, you know, not for sure primarily not to have our staff parking where patients should be. They shouldn't have trouble finding parking. So, so we're pressing on that. I'm thinking by May of this year, you know, we'll have all the parking decals out, we'll get the enforcement going. And then what we will be doing over the next period of time is, like I said, between now and toward the, the fall months, is see how our management is working out for us. And so maybe one thing we could do, we could suggest, if we'll work with Kristen, is kind of give you, here's how it went, right? And we can, we'll have Frederick do another count and see how effective we've been. So, but it's important us to make sure our priority is that patients don't have to look for parking, and our staff has adequate parking somewhere around the campus. All right? I wanted to, just to show we have other properties that are kind of in transition. We had a number of residential properties that were releasing, so some, many of them are sold on Goyan and Washington. We're working with the city on the Sherman property. It's a house that, that is in the process of transitioning, but just to know we have other properties that are not providing us any parking benefit. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you very much. I had one question about this Lot 12. You may have mentioned it, and I didn't hear it, but is there a shuttle that would promote its use by staff? Have you, or is that just not...
We're not starting out with it because we're trying to promote, well, this is one of the things, one of my other team members is, we're working on making it more, I don't know what you call it, visible. So we're actually going to be putting in a, a walking trail between the hospital and that. So we're trying to make it seem closer because, you know, we're able to walk it.
It's a little too close to actually have a shuttle or some sort of...
Yeah, no, I think we could, we've talked about it, but I think we're going to start with getting people to encourage it. It's, we're going into the summer months, we're hoping the conditions are good, where people aren't so concerned about it. We're going to add a emergency phone in the lot, so if there is any problems out there, they can, they can do that. We also, Kay here can do escorts if they need help to get to the parking lots. But, you know, I think the next step is we'll see how that goes. And one of the things we've started to count, and Frederick did this, is see what the utilization is, and we'll see how that hopefully grows.
Okay. Any questions from the rest of the Commissioners on the presentation? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the time. I appreciate the update. Okay, we'll move on to environmental assessments and public hearings. Item 10.1 is a site plan, I'm sorry, I closed that prematurely. I should probably provide opportunity for the public to comment on that. I just thought it was a receive and file, but would any members of the public like to ask questions about this presentation on the parking at Marshall Hospital?
Yeah.
Good evening. Would you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Michael Drubish. Just a quick history, the push to get Marshall to possibly build a parking structure was so that they would stop consuming historic homes in the neighborhood. They would buy up homes, tear them down, turn them into parking lots. And this, you know, path of gobble was, you know, they were politely told to stop doing that. That was one of my questions was how many homes over the last five or 10 years have been purchased, demoed, or anything like that? I saw on that, bottom of that list, there was, looked like two addresses on Quaker Street with demolition, and just wanted to get a little bit of flesh out on that. Are these habitable homes? Are they total wrecks? That kind of thing. But just a brief history for anyone that didn't know, it was because they, they kept buying and tearing down homes. And it is right there in a historic neighborhood. And just a question, too, it sounds like they have their security, if they had a shuttle cart, if they're starting to put people out far in Lot 12, you know, if they, I like the idea of the phone, and they could, because the employee is probably rushing to get there and doesn't like having to hoof it. And if they could just phone in, hey, you know, shuttle in five minutes, Lot 12, just a thought. So, thank you.
Okay. Would you like to address the comments that we received?
Early on, the hospital did purchase a number of homes because they were planning, you remember the, the map that showed where some of these structures were going? We essentially sold most of those out to new residents. So on Washington Street, I think there was either two or three properties that were going to be a site for where the parking lot could go. We essentially, instead of tearing them down, we sold them. So we did sell it. There was, I think on, on Quaker, we're actually in the process of working with the city. There's a duplex that's not in great condition. Most of the, at least in my tenure, most of the properties, at least there's two that we've demised, were like in terrible condition. They were, actually, the city was encouraging us to remove the properties because they weren't safe. So, you know, the Sherman properties, one of them, were, you know, the land's probably worth something, but the building is, is not in good condition. They're all residences. So from, from Marshall's perspective, we really can't use them for much because they're not, you know, they're not zoned properly.
Okay. So if I understand you correctly, there was one house that was in poor condition and needed to be demolished, but all the rest were resold?
Yeah.
Back and are habitable or inhabited, I guess?
Let's see. Yeah, I might have the numbers wrong, but there's, so these two or three that we've sold, there's some on Goyan, we're in the process of selling, we're not doing anything other than selling them. And then there's a duplex that's on Quaker and Washington that we're having taken out because it's in bad condition. So we don't have any plan for it other than getting it in a safe, safe situation on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And then on the shuttle, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. Actually, we... And then on the shuttle, I'm not opposed to it, I actually wouldn't mind having an electric cart or something that sort, so, you know, we're not at a point to do that, but, you know, I think if that helps, that'd be something we might-
Something to take under advisement, perhaps?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question about the presentation from Marshall Hospital regarding their parking? Okay. Oh, you do have a, okay. If you would please state your name for the record?
Hey, my name's Sean Briggs. Not necessarily so much a question, but I don't know how many of you have walked to that area, and there's talk as far as the shuttle, but that's a virtually flat walk of maybe two minutes to get to the hospital. It's really negligible. I think it'd be a waste of money to try and do the shuttle.
Okay. Fair enough. Anyone else have a comment about the presentation? Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you for coming down and updating us on the conditions out there. Have a good evening. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, of course. Now, we'll move on to item 10, which is, 10.1 is a site plan review. 25-01, Bellagio Salon Exterior Lighting, consideration of a site plan review to approve existing unpermitted string lighting along the front facade, 901 Spring Street, and find the request categorically exempt from CEQA per Section 15301. And I will turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So, the subject request seeks approval for the addition of exterior string lighting on the front facade of 901 Spring Street for the Bellagio Salon. The lighting is currently installed, and the request is the result of coordination between the Development Services Department and the business owner. The proposed project includes LED string lighting to illuminate the underside of the existing awning and front entryway of the salon. The light emitted by the string lighting is warm white in color, and the lighting would be utilized during normal business hours and turned off after closing. Staff has included recommended condition of approval number three to require the installation of a timer to ensure that the lights are off between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. The application also includes the proposed use of alternatively colored bulbs during holidays. Currently, string lighting, if not approved by the Planning Commission as permanent exterior lighting, is temporary for holiday lighting, typically between November and January. String lighting with white light has been permitted at other locations across the city over the last three years. Should the Planning Commission determine that the temporary use of colored bulbs for this project to be used for short durations during the course of the year be considered for approval? Staff recommends that the commission consider a limitation to the number of holidays and identify a duration of time for the bulb's use, and staff drafted condition number four, reflecting a number of holidays and duration for Planning Commission consideration, although this can be at the discretion of the commission. Overall, in staff's opinion, the lighting as proposed is consistent with the community design element of the Placerville General Plan, as well as zoning ordinance sections 1049, Site Plan Review, 1046, Exterior Lighting Regulations, and 10414, sorry, 10514, Central Business, oh, sorry, Business Professional Zone. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the findings in support of SPR 25-01, and conditionally approve SPR 25-01 based on the project information and recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. Of note, following distribution of the March 18th packet, staff noted an error on page four of the staff report, under zoning classification and regulation consistency. Section 10-4-16 should say exterior lighting regulations rather than sign regulations, I apologize for that. And additionally, in the first paragraph of page five, there is a reference to a restaurant, and this is my, why I should never use the same staff report as a template, and I apologize. So, this should be business or salon, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. And I want to make sure that I understood, at the beginning of your presentation, did you say that these lights are currently being operated when the business is open, and they go off at close of business?
That is my understanding, although I believe the applicant is here and can speak to that.
I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand what you said in your presentation. Thank you. Any questions of staff on the staff report? Okay. At this time, we'd like to invite the applicant, or the, yeah, or the representative to the podium to present the project. If you would, please state your name for the record. Good evening.
Hello. Yes, my name is Larissa Luhon. I don't really think there's much additional to present, other than just discussing some of the details and the, sorry, I wasn't able to print this, so I'd have to, I have to jump between pages on my phone here. I think the recommended conditions of approval, the staff did recommend that this is in harmony with city's ordinance, so it has recommended the approval of the lights. I would think the main things of discussion here really is, on Attachment 1, recommended conditions of approval would be item four, the use of colored bulbs, including red, green, orange, purple, blue, and pink, are permitted for a period not to exceed four weeks for each holiday, not to exceed five holidays per year. As Kristin mentioned, this is a recommendation, it's not black and white and stone, it's also at your discretion, so I'd like you to reconsider that limitation. For one, it states four weeks for each holiday. On the previous staff report, let me jump to the other page here, sorry. Give me just a moment here, it's downloading. Want to say, there was a certain reference for the holiday lights, it referenced the blinking lights for the holiday season. Page six, it looks like, it's itemized at the top of the page, number four, brightly colored or blinking lights are allowed for holiday display only and shall be removed no later than January 12th. I didn't see anything that referenced the beginning of that, but I'm assuming it's December 1st, so December 1st to January 12th, you're looking at five, almost six weeks in timeframe, which will exceeds that four-week recommendation from the staff. The main thing for the colored lights, the two most important holidays for me would be Halloween, and I would request that it extend beyond the four weeks and to fit the actual calendar month, which would be October 1st to October 31st. The specific colors I would like to do would be green, orange, and purple, and it would run for the entire calendar month of October, not with the four-week limitation. The other dates, of course, that are very important to me would be Christmas, which would be the entire month of December. Since it wasn't quite specific in the staff presentation, I would actually like to request that the Christmas lights could be in harmony with what the Christmas tree lighting is in Placerville, which is typically the day after Thanksgiving through December 31st, and perhaps maybe we should just do January 12th to harmonize with perhaps the blinking light ordinance, I'm not sure, there's some flexibility there, but clearly I want to do green and red for that duration, so my request would be more specifically, I guess, the day after Thanksgiving through January 12th, but I'm also fine with if we write January, you know, 1st through the 5th. That way, it allows me time to obviously switch the bulbs back out. Personally, I don't really like Christmas lights beyond January 1st, but maybe that would make it easier. The other thing that I would like to request is not having that limitation, I think it said maybe, let me jump to the limitation here. It said not to exceed five holiday calendars per year. I'm not really sure why the city would want to limit holiday cheer. Holidays are very important to me. So, the other request that I would like to make, since we're, now's the time to go through this, I actually put a small list together. I would like to request to do red, white, and blue for one week, so I guess seven days specifically, for the following holidays. I would like to do Memorial Day week for the seven days leading up to the actual holiday each year. I would also like to do 4th of July for the seven days and including up to 4th of July, red, white, and blue as well. I would also like to do Labor Day, September 1st, including and up to at least September 11th, red, white, and blue as well. I think that's important to acknowledge those. Let me take a look here. So, the red, white, and blue ones I would like to request, that would be my second important holidays I would like to acknowledge. The other ones, again, at your discretion, let me take a look here. I would like to do green for St. Patrick's Day for the seven days leading up to St. Patrick's Day holiday. Mother's Day in May, I would like to request the pink, that's why I put the pink bulbs in there, for the seven days of the full week leading up to the Mother's Day holiday. And I would like to do blue for Father's Day, including up to and leading up to the Father's Day date. Outside of that, the only other request that I wanted to make for the adjustment, let me go back to the paperwork here. Okay, so, it's the Attachment 1, again, under recommended conditions of approval. Number nine on page two, all construction shall be limited to Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00, with no construction permitted on Sundays or city or statewide-recognized holidays. I'm a salon, most salons are closed Sundays and Mondays, so Sundays are a very ideal day for me to switch out bulbs. I think that limitation is a little narrow, considering the business industry that I'm in, so I would request that that, assuming the construction's being, referring to the days that I would switch the bulbs out, again, I don't want to be dealing with a write-up because I'm switching bulbs out on a Sunday, so I'm not sure if that's what that's specifically referring to or not, but I would request that that would probably be removed or adjusted how it's written. Other than that, I request that you approve their recommended conditions of approval with those adjustments. Again, my request is, I would like to be involved with the participation and celebration of different holidays, and I think changing the light bulbs out is a fun way to do that, and I think limiting that to only five holidays a year is a little bit narrow, so, that's it, unless you guys have any other questions for me.
Thank you very much. Now, I just want to make sure that I understand your request. I was looking at the material that you provided in support of your application, and on the first page of your project description, there you list the 4th of July, the month of October for Halloween, and the month of December for Christmas, and then to that list, tonight you said you would like to add Labor Day to September 11th.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a-
Or red, white, and blue specifically.
Okay.
And Mother's Day and Father's Day.
Okay.
And St. Patrick's Day.
Okay. And the other question I had for you is, as I asked for clarification from Ms. Hunter, currently you're operating these lights during business hours, correct?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. And are you willing to continue with that same, you know, you could have a timer, like, when dusk starts, obviously that makes sense, saves you a little bit of electricity, and then-
Yes, yeah.
But when the building's not occupied, you tend to want those lights out.
Yes, Dr. Rice, the owner of the building, actually has a timer already built in to his electrical room, so it would just simply be an adjustment of the timing. I want to say, I think it was shut off between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. in the condition-
Right, that's a standard requirement we have, like, down in our business district.
Yeah, and that standard works, because sometimes we do work late, my coworker will often come in.
Right. And you would want the lights on when you're in the building, but when the business is closed, you want-
And that shouldn't be a problem. The only issue we run into is sometimes during power outages, it does completely reset the-
Sure.
Timer, so unfortunately, we'll do our best to keep up with it. For example, I already got a notice that the power's going out-
Understood, yes.
-on the 31st, so sometimes we have to work around inconveniences, but other than that, the timer is installed, already available to be set. I just would need assistance from the owner to refine those details.
Okay. Do any of the other commissioners have questions on the applicant? Go ahead, Kirk.
I do, because I admit that I'm confused. Let's just look at number four, the attachment of recommended conditions of approval. That's the one line that refers to colored bulbs.
Yes.
And then we go to your project proposal, which is much longer. Can you give us some language that we could use for number four that would meet what you're asking us to do?
I would, I mean, my only recommendation, and I, there was, I perhaps should have listed in my application more specifically dates and times. If the staff is recommending specific timeframes, then perhaps the best language would literally just be to itemize that out and start with, okay, what's the first holiday of the year that we run into, and say, okay, you know, Memorial Day for a period of one week leading up to Memorial Day X color, for Mother's Day on the calendar year, seven days leading up to Mother's Day, you know, pink, like, I'm fine if we need to be that narrow and specific, if that would make it easier for the contract and staff, what have you. My big thing is, I just want to be able to do those major holidays. I think it's fun, I think it adds to the cheer, and if it doesn't cause any harm, then I would like to have added in.
I appreciate your concern. The issue is, what kind of specific language to include for item number four under the recommended conditions of approval?
Oh, well, I think we'll bring that back to commission, maybe we can-
Yeah, if you guys want to discuss-
... based on the comments.
My recommendation, Kirk, is simply to state, you know, go through the list of holidays that I mentioned and say, okay, on this holiday, seven calendar days, including an up to X holiday date, and then, of course, for example, the Halloween calendar, I would, I'm very specifically not requesting the four weeks, because it's only 28 days, I want October 1st through October 31st for the Halloween colors, for the green, the purple, and the orange, you know, it's, Halloween's on the 31st, so I clearly want to include that in my timeframe. And then, Christmas, of course, again, maybe stating day after Thanksgiving, including up to, you know, January 5th or January 12th, what have you, depending on harmony with the other ordinances for the blinking lights, et cetera. I don't have any intention of having blinking lights, these would just be standstill colors. Yeah. So, hopefully that answers that question on language. Any other questions or concerns, or-
Answer your question.
I think what you're suggesting is, we'll try to hammer out some specific-
Yes, I think that's, that's the best course. Any other questions for the applicant? Before we have you sit down, Ms. Hunter, can you address the concern for condition of approval number nine about construction? When I reconstruction, I think of hanging the lights, not simply changing bulbs.
Yeah, this is a standard condition, typically-
It is a standard condition.
... in all site plan reviews, so it would not include just changing out the light color.
It would be restringing new lights, and-
Or doing more intensive changes to the building.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and I'm sure you appreciate that this is, since this is a site plan review that runs with the land, we need to make it as consistent with other SPRs and also applicable to, you know, should another business move in there at some point, so it is standard language, but I think you understand now that, yeah, you, when you have time available-
Yeah, that's amazing.
... are able to go out, and you physically have to change the bulbs.
Yeah, yes, that's-
Yeah. Okay, but that's not considered construction.
Okay, well, works for me.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us and coming down here to address our questions, and no further questions at this time from any of the commissioners. Okay, please have a seat.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open it up to public comment on this application. Please step up to the podium. Good evening, Michael.
Hello. Initially, my first comment was going to be, I cannot believe there's a site plan review trigger for string lights, which are basically a lighted extension cord. You know, I think the, I would like to see the Planning Commission recommend- You know, I think the, I would like to see the planning commission recommend to council to adjust the code, 10-whatever-it-is, specify that changing of fixed lighting fixtures is a trigger, is a significant trigger for a site plan review. It is kind of ridiculous, the cost of a site plan review. I don't know what the current cost is, staff could, you know, mention that. But then when the discussion got into colors, and then you start thinking, okay, now it's going to be just a sidebar, holiday lighting should be exempt in the code. So with the Christmas lights downtown, they want to do Fourth of July lights for a short period, I believe it's exempt. So, another thing, but...
I'm sorry, you, you said you do not have a problem with that?
It's the trigger of...
Okay, could you please, I, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem, I was...
My hearing, uh, but I just want to make sure that you don't think the color lights are a problem.
No, started thinking about setting a precedence. Although this is a site plan review specific to this property and portuity, those others with string lights that have already gotten their site plan review are going to want to come back and say, I want colored bulbs. And everyone with them are, I want colored bulbs. And then you're going to spend a lot of time policing, was that up for five weeks or four and a half weeks? Just got to be cautious of the unintended consequences of, of that. But this is a site plan review specific for this property, so I understand the granting of that. If there's going to be that many holidays, you might want to, one, I think it also should be addressed in city code for the colored bulbs. Council, right now, is just assuming most of the lighting on structures is whitish, and you might be kind of overstepping your bounds, grounding a kind of a, a new thing. So you might want to just pause on the colored bulbs and, and even ask, um, Mona, you know, is this kosher, or we give, are we grant, also, you're, would you be granting a special favor without a variance? If you're letting them do colored bulbs and not other people? Just some things to be thinking about, you know, what do you, it seems very simple, right? Just a string light that's plugged in, and then it colors throughout the year. Let me see, what else was? Um, there was a question on the eight-foot head clearance, because I believe everything like umbrellas, awnings and such, there has to be an eight-foot head clearance. And I would say no flashing bulbs, because I believe flashing signs are, are banned in, in the code. And that would just kind of be similar to me, so it should be static. And yeah, and I think you should address, what is the trigger for a site plan review? Is it an extension cord a significant trigger? Because you can just pull it out and pull it down, simple. All right, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public like to address the commission on this project? Welcome back.
Hi, Sean Briggs again. Honestly, anything that doesn't interfere with things that adds to the festive mood in the city, I'm in favor for. So I'd like to see it approved. On a different note, as far as that location, because I know people that go there and whatnot, lighting's sort of critical while they're doing business at night. You get people coming through there that are, not the business itself, but up and down the road or the parking lots near there, that very questionable behavior. We've gone in multiple nights, gone and walked people to cars because of it. So a little bit of extra lighting, I think, just adds to the safety of the city, too.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this topic? Okay, thank you very much. I'll close the, uh, public comment portion of the, um, public hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration and possible action. I, uh, actually, looking at the pictures of the existing lighting, although unpermitted, you know, I think it does, um, improve the appearance, gives a nice highlight, um, to the building. Uh, one thing I want the, would like the commissioners to consider is changing, um, condition of approval number three. Since currently, these are being operated during business hours only, I would like to maintain that, because this property is adjacent to residential zones across the street, uh, you know, behind, not so much affected, but the surrounding area, if you look at our zoning map, it, uh, there are a lot of residential, there are some, uh, public facilities, like right across Tunnel, I think that is. But this is a very isolated case. It, it's not the entire building, it's just, uh, the Bellagio, uh, facility. And, and I, I do think that it looks, um, it looks nice. So I think it is a, uh, attractive improvement to that property, but I, in respect to the neighbors and in this specific context, I would, um, ask that we change that so that, um, they are operated just during the hours of business. And, you know, we understand that that can change somewhat, depending on the clientele, but that's up to the owner. But rather than having our standard, um, you know, hours off between 11:00 p.m., I, I think that would be rare that the salon is open that late at night, but I would rather have, uh, language indicating it's during business hours only.
My only concern with that is, um, that might take out the use of a timer, where I would prefer if they could set it on a timer and not have to think about it each day. Um, I think that if we could allow them for that, I think would be to make it, say, 9:00 p.m., maybe a little bit earlier, if your concern is that, um, but not necessarily make it a manual time. Do you see what I mean, just have it be?
Automated?
Yeah, maybe, I think like 9:00 o'clock is not too late in a residential area, but earlier than the 11:00, so I understand preserving the peace of the area, but not necessarily making it open-ended of, um, of just allowing, like, you closed at 8:00, now you needed to turn that off, you know? Um, I, I'm more comfortable with just the not, like a 9:00 to 6:00 a.m., if that, if you're open to that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, uh, it does make it a lot easier for the business owner, rather than having to think about turning them on and off, uh, it's on that, uh, some sort of timer, automated, um, time.
I guess I have a couple of concerns. One is this idea of the colored bulbs seems...
Oh, can we get to that in a second? I, I'd like to, uh, take care of the timing issue, because I have questions about that, too. What do you think about the hours?
Just to specifically talk about the timing. Our code says there's a couple of concerns that this is supposed to address. One is for electric use to be conservative. That's good, LED bulbs, we've got that covered. The second is for illumination for safety purposes. And one of the things that you note, as you look at the photographs, is that in this time, things have changed, and you will have people starting to sleep in dark places. So I'm not sure that I, I really want to get away from addressing that safety concern by the kind of hours, because if you have lights on at night, and these are not terribly bright lights, they're more ambiance, if anything else. So I think that if we start to go away from that timing, we're going to detract from one of the primary objectives, which is safety, and that's a big concern these days. That's one of, okay.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Well, is the timing, the, the 11:00 to 6:00, is that not already taking into account, um, adjacent residences?
That's, um, a standard, uh, language that we've used, uh, for other site plan reviews for this kind of lighting, and those have, um, all been in our business districts or either downtown or on Broadway. This is the first one that I recall that's been, uh, if you remember the net map in the staff report, this is a, a small, um, zone business professional surrounded by residential. So this is the first time this has come before, it's this particular, uh, site situation. Uh, but the, the language that staff included is our, our standard language for those other applications. Let's see, there, there's this, a smoke shop on Broadway across from Hangtown Village they came before, so that was a, a standard requirement we had for them, just for an example. But my concern is, in this residential area, I think it's, um, 11:00 p.m. is a little late, so...
I, I think the lighting seems to be very subdued, though, and it's shielded, and it's relatively minimal, and, um, I know I've had my haircut sometimes go until, you know, 10:00 o'clock at night, just personally, so, you know, so I'm hesitant to want to constrain that, um, for this business owner.
So, um, your concern, if I understand, is that, um, saying 9:00 o'clock, backing off of the 11:00 p.m., or, yeah, bringing it back from 11:00 p.m., that might not provide enough, as opposed to, what, what I was suggesting is during operation, operating hours, closing business, you shut off the lights, which, Amy had a concern that that makes it a little trickier for the, um, the owner to make sure that the lights come on and off, rather than having it automated.
My overall inclination would be to leave the, the language from 11:00 to 6:00. That would be my personal preference.
But that's not the way it's being operated now, so...
But, but for the, um, the parameters to be the 11:00 to 6:00, and if they operate it within that, then that's, that's their prerogative.
So if they choose to turn the lights off when they close the doors, then that's up to them? Okay, so keep the standard language as your preference? Oh, that makes sense, because of, as I pointed out, this does run with the land.
Yes.
So if another bus, business comes in that's open typically maybe a little later than a, a business, uh, beauty salon, then they have that flexibility.
That was, yes.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Now, let's, let's talk about the use of the colored bulbs. You know, this is the first time that this has come before us, um, and it could be that it's just, you know, a new product that this applicant would like to use. So I, you know, that, that's the point of a, a site plan review, and if everyone up and down Main Street, um, or wherever decides they want to use colored bulbs, then I guess we'll have a lot more updated site plan reviews, and, you know, I'm okay with that. Again, we look at each one of these in context. You know, as we, we know, this is an isolated, uh, business professional instance of using this lighting. So, um, you know, I, I, if this is, uh, the applicant's preference, I, um, I don't object to it. What I, I don't know, I, I think it's a change of conditions. The applicant submitted, uh, her, uh, project description, and in there were listed just three instances that she wanted to, uh, use these colored lights, and then staff, um, came up with a possibility of five, which I thought was pretty generous. And then also four weeks, uh, you know, that could either be, um, you know, the month of October, or just four random weeks, uh, spread across two, two months. I, to me, that sounds sufficient. So, you know, I, I appreciate Mr. Brobich positing the question that it was, um, a special treatment, but I, I disagree, I think this is, this is what happens as we move forward in time. New products come available, people want to use them, and that's why we have site plan reviews. And since this is her preference, um, you know, the, the use of the colored lights are, to me, I, I, I don't object to that. I, I am a little confused as to why now, um, we're being asked to consider seven or more holidays. To me, that seems like, you know, well, actually, a lot of work on her part. And honestly, I prefer just the, um, the warm white lights that were shown in the applicant's package. So those are my thoughts on that. So I, I'm going to hand this over to you first, Mr. Smith, since you started touching this first. So what are your thoughts on condition number four?
To be consistent and principled, we have a rule regarding the lights, that they have two objectives. One is to be conservative with reference to using energy, and the second is for safety. And certainly, you illuminate a dark area. The lighting that we're discussing, colored bulbs, have to do with advertising or something that's commensurate with, uh, a, a business purpose, which is not consistent with those first two. So my suggestion is as follows. We've already addressed this in the past, where people put up signs that say, "Open." If it's on the inside of the glass, a rule, I believe, is, that's fine. It's when it's on the outside. So here, just to see the illustration of the building property, is you have...
You're showing us, hold on, let me, uh...
And I don't know if they're, they're numbered, yes, it's, it's the, uh, project...
This is from the applicant's...
Right, project description. So it's the third page...
You're showing us, one, two, three. So on page three of the applicant's...
Right, page three or possibly four for that matter, because on four, you have an example of, of where our design purpose is met. You have one where there's no lights, the second at the bottom is where there's string lights, and it illuminates the area and addresses a safety concern, so you don't have itinerant persons sleeping in the doorway. But with all those windows, the simple answer is, you can put any kind of colored lights in there you want. Red, white, and blue, purple, pink, uh, black, you know, orange, whatever, for Halloween. You can do that anytime you want throughout the season, and then we don't have to wonder about, uh, some site plan review that's going to run with the property. Hopefully, this person will be there for a very many decades, but it's a site plan review that goes with the land, so somebody else could come in there, and they're going to be dealing with these lights, uh, their colored lights. So I think the principled, consistent way to address it is we have the lights that have this nice warm glow, add ambiance and safety. And then for being able to put up colored bulbs, you put them on the inside of the windows, and that's always been permitted. And we don't have to worry about, well, let's see, is it the fifth day of Christmas that you're going to, or, hmm, is it after Thanksgiving you're going to, it doesn't matter, we don't have to worry about that. So I think that would help us consistency in approval. And as far as the residential area, we have people have their lights on at night and, and things like that that are not much brighter than this, so I, I think that's the way I would do it, to be consistent.
So you would prefer just to eliminate number four completely?
Because they're still free to do it on the inside, and it, and it sounds exciting, very nice, but we don't have to put it into...
You don't have to speak to that.
Right.
Alyssa, we, go ahead.
Um, yes, I agree with what you're saying, however, I also would like to add, there's an aesthetic and visual element of the general plan, and string lights are a very popular, um, aesthetic feature that attracts customers and whatnot. So I don't see any harm with that in saying that the city shall promote the enhancement of commercial buildings and properties. And in terms of the colors, I also don't have an issue with that. The only future concern I see with approving something like this is, as it becomes more popular, we may see folks wanting to, like, regulate which colors for the, like, clutter potentially, if a lot of businesses want to do it throughout the town. But I do agree, I could add quite a few, uh, site plan reviews.
Um, so yes, I, I landed where Mr. Smith did. I am disinclined to allow the colored bulbs to be approved. I, I like the string lighting, I think it adds great, um, ambiance, it fits our goals, safety and things, but I think the colored bulbs in this situation are way too much to manage, and I think that it, it will create, what, what Mr. Jobich said is where I landed when I was reading through. I just saw a, a nightmare, a waterfall of a lot of different, like, well, I want this one, and I actually, now I want breast cancer awareness, which we do as a city, so, and Valentine's Day wasn't mentioned. So it's kind of like a handpicking, too, a little bit. So my inclination is to not approve colored bulbs in here. I like your idea that they can do it many other ways. There's, you can add Christmas lights, if you really want, you can turn your, your string lights off when you have the Christmas lights up, whatnot. But I think it's a, I think it's a management nightmare, the colored bulbs in this case. And it's also a lot of bulbs, I mean, if you have all those colors, and I counted at least 30 bulbs, that's a lot of bulb management... of bulb management in general. So if one breaks, then do you only have 29 pink bulbs, you know? So I just really think that it could get really complicated really easily. So my inclination would be to remove the ability to put the colored ones, approve the string lighting as it's presented, because I do think it does add, and I do think it's beneficial for the safety and the visibility of the applicant. Oh, and then, and to say, though, I do think we need to consider a color guide or timelines for major holidays, or whatever we consider that to be, only because they also do now have those permanent lights that go under awnings that you can control. Basically, the future of lighting is that you can change it with the remote to 18,000 different colors, right? So I do think we need to manage for this going forward, and have some ideas of what we want. But in this case, I don't think we need to have that now, because, well, at least my inclination would be to not have to manage for it, because I don't, I'm not inclined to approve the colored bulbs.
Well put.
I can make a resolution if I only knew what the business was about number three for the timing, from when to when.
I think we're going to leave it 11:00 to 6:00, right?
I'm still inclined to limit it, because we still, you know, regardless of the use of this building, you still are surrounded by a residential area, and, you know, no, we don't know, nor do we control or advise those residences, but, you know, when you travel around Placerville, typically, a lot of residential areas are, you know, quieter, not brightly lit after about, you know, 8:30, 9:00 o'clock. So that, you know, that is more of a residential setting, and it will continue to be that despite, you know, this runs with the land, so if there is a change in the business there, it's still going to be in that, facing those residential lots, so...
Did we have a consensus for number three, to keep it as is?
Okay, yeah, so keep it as written in the staff report, 11:00 to 6:00, okay.
And then just completely removing number four is all we need to be concerned about for, okay.
So if you'd like, I can move, move?
Did you have another comment before we...
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question as to whether or not number four is kind of a standard language in SPR?
No. It would be specific to this site plan review.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Let's have a motion. Anyone want to make a motion, Mr. Smith?
I move that we adopt the recommendation of the staff, approve special permit review number 25-01, making the following findings in support of the application, that, one, the request is exempt from the environmental review, and the project qualifies for the categorical exemption under the California Environmental Equality Act Guidelines, Section 15301. Two, that the project site at 901 to 905 Spring Street contains a single-story professional building located within the Business Professional District. That, three, the project request is consistent with the Placerville General Plan Design Element, Goal B, and that the revision of the existing exterior lighting on the Sevick Parcel will be consistent with the Ordinance 10-4-16, Exterior Lighting Regulations that shall be energy efficient and will provide an element of safety to the sidewalk for pedestrians and customers. Four, the project request is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance Sections 10-4-9, Site Plan Review-10-4-16, Exterior Lighting Regulations, and 10-5-13, The Business Professional Zone. And five, approval is based upon the analysis provided by the staffs and their today's report to the Planning Commission, and limited to the compliance within the project description and application submitted package. The incorporate the attachment list of specific conditions, numbers one through 11, with the exceptions of four being eliminated, and that would be it, if I'm correct.
And could I, a friendly amendment to add, number two, conditionally approve on page seven?
Which one?
Back on page seven, after the five findings?
Yes. It's conditionally approved, SPR 2501, located at 901, Spring Street, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, including attachments, one of the staff report that I just listed a moment ago, with again the exception of number four. Thank you.
And again, clarification that we are removing condition number four?
Yes.
So we have a motion for Mr. Smith. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Catherine. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
All right, this passes 5:00. Our actions are subject to an appeal for 10 days, and we appreciate you coming down. You've heard our deliberations and our concerns, and we actually think that this is a great improvement for your business. The warm white lights really do set off that awning, and so I think it really is an improvement. And of course, the new, as Kirk pointed out, can decorate from the interior to address your concerns, to kind of change the look seasonally. Thank you very much. It's 7:15. At this time, I would like to take a five-minute recess, so please, let's come back at about 7:23 or so. All right, it's 7:23, and I'm bringing us back to the reconvening us under item 10. Next up is 10.2, Site Plan Review 25-02, Market on Main Exterior Lighting. Another lighting request. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So the subject requests, similar to the previous, seeks approval for the addition of exterior string lighting on the front facade of the existing building and along the upper and lower fence line of the property addressed 585 Main Street. The lighting is currently installed, and the request is the result of coordination between the Development Services Department and the business owners. The proposed project includes LED string lighting to illuminate the south and western elevation of the building. I incorrectly referred to it as the north, I apologize, it is the south, located along the roof line and the black metal fence along the front and west side of the parcel. The light emitted by the lights is a warm white color. The lighting would be utilized during normal business hours and would be turned off after closing. Similar to the previous application, staff has included a recommended condition of approval, Approval Number Three, to require the installation of a timer to ensure that the lighting is off between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Given the narrowness of the parcel, staff recommends that the string lighting on the lower level of the western boundary fence be removed, as well as the lighting on the front porch on, when you're facing it, the right-hand side. These locations are shown in Figure Five of the staff report. Illumination of the neighboring parcels is unavoidable, given the narrowness of the lot. However, it is the opinion of staff that this modification would reduce glare and light trespass to the east melters and west sweetie pies, and would reduce visual clutter, also not creating a nuisance to neighboring properties or a safety hazard for drivers along Main Street. Overall, in staff's opinion, the lighting as amended is consistent with the community design element of the Placerville General Plan, as well as zoning ordinance Sections 10-4-9, Site Plan Review, 10-4-16, Exterior Lighting Regulations, and 10-5-14, Central Business District Zone. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the findings in support of SPR 25-02, and conditionally approve SPR 25-02 based on the project information and recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment One. Again, of note, following distribution of the March 18th packets, staff noted an error on page five of the staff report, again, the same one. Under zoning classification and regulation consistency, Section 10-4-16 should say Exterior Lighting Regulations rather than Sign Regulations. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much, and thank you for pointing out that correction. I had one question. Are there any other instances of this string lighting on fencing? As I'm thinking about, I didn't do a survey up and down Main Street, but everything that I can recall is on the building, it's lining the building in particular.
That is correct.
Okay, so this is a bit unusual, what they were requesting. Okay, that was my only question. Go ahead, Catherine.
I just wanted to point out, I spoke with Kristin earlier today, just to verify that the staff recommendation does not include the string lighting that goes along the deck on the western side of the, it does not include modifying that as it's proposed. So the upper and lower, yeah, just on the fence.
Now wait, on figure five, on page five, that's showing that the recommendation is to remove?
She's saying this one on the, what is that, fencing of the building?
Fencing, oh.
Of the, of the actual deck.
Part of the long...
They are two separate.
So there's double fencing along the entirety of the western parcel, but some of it's on a deck, and then some of it's on the iron fencing.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you for pointing that out. I thought that was all the iron work, but I see now what you're talking about. Okay, thank you. Great point.
Good, I think I may have misspoken earlier. I think I was thinking you were talking about removal of it entirely, like I was talking about the porch on the front, so I apologize. Actually, staff is recommending the lower section be removed on that. Of the entire west side. I apologize for the confusion.
I'm sorry, so everything, the lower string, is staff's recommendation?
To remove, yes.
Okay.
It's a little bright. I think the intent of the application, based on conversations, is to illuminate the pathway as it's pretty dark. There's no lighting for patrons, so the sidewalk to the pathway is a little dark.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and a sharp eye.
Thank you, Kristin.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
I did just want to get your opinion if there's enough lighting for folks to be able to enjoy, like, sitting outside in the evening, if those extra lights were to be removed?
I cannot say if I'm sure. I haven't actually eaten there after dark, so apologize, I don't know that I can answer that. I know that the initial concerns have been safety, being able to access the front entrance from the sidewalk.
Okay, great. I would just ask our commissioners to consider, I believe...
Hold off on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not...
Right now, we're asking just questions of the staff report.
Okay.
Get you into good habits before we start voicing.
Okay.
It's, you don't want to chill public opinion, so...
Thank you.
So hold on to that. All right, any other questions for staff at this time? And I don't see our applicant in the audience tonight, so we won't have a presentation from them, but I will open it up to the public for comment. Third time's a charm. Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Doug.
Now, we are recording, so now, I'm going to ask you to state your name for the record, please.
Are you requiring it?
Go ahead, Mr. Drobish.
Thank you. I agreed that the double row along the bottom of the short fence was excessive. I guess that was what staff intended anyway. I have no problem with string, string lights, to me, are very dim, amber... to me are very dim, amber, very aesthetic, you know, but I have no problem with them on the top deck rail, along architectural features, fences, especially if it's guiding a path to the doorway safety. And for, you know, they have a picnic table out there by their sign, and I don't think that sign has a permanent light on it. I would grant them string lights around their sign, or even a cable back to the structure to run string lights, just for a safety reason, because they do have steps coming out the front porch down to that little flat area with the table, even though they're not here to argue for themselves. It just makes sense to me. I don't recall them being open late at night, but maybe in the winter it would make more sense. And then just generally, speaking to the string lights, I agree that they're pleasant if they're amber-white, not flashing, and I agree with Ms. Lepers, start managing the colors. And I retract my previous saying, send it to city to change the code. Remembered, you're already empowered under city code to interpret zoning requirements and needs, so you can make that ruling. If they don't really like it, they can appeal to city council. But it is smart to start coming up with a set policy on color, and that was a beautiful save, Mr. Smith, on the colors go in the window inside. Beautiful save. And just to reiterate, I think that maybe the string lights that plug into a receptacle are considered a minor change and don't trigger a site plan review, which I guess is now 600 bucks. So if it plugs into receptacle, it seems to me that is a hair dryer, power washer, electric lawnmower. It's a way to differentiate between minor change and major change, because the director can decide. If it's major, it needs to come back to planning commission. If it's a minor, then they have the ability to say, it's not that big of a deal. And you'll also still have nuisance. If somebody does put up too many string lights or colors and you start getting nuisance complaints, then you can come in and revoke it then, so I think you're covered all those ways. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. As far as the triggering a site plan review, I think this, you know, lighting is something that is standard, considered standard for a site plan review. So, yeah, you know, I don't think that this is excessive, even though, as Mr. Drowish pointed out, you know, you're essentially plugging something into receptacle. It has a much greater impact on the aesthetics and the surrounding, so it is worthy of our consideration. I'd just like to start the discussion off, you know, looking at the pictures, and unfortunately, this is where we get into, you know, we don't have the applicant here to respond to our questions, so it's a little frustrating for me, because I have some concerns. It's excessive. I don't, I like the lights on the gable and across the facade. I don't like all the double row of lights along the fence, and, you know, I appreciate the concern for safety. It would be my preference to not, this is unusual that there's lighting on the fence. I, like I said, it's all too, it's too much of all one type. There are other ways that you can install efficient, low voltage or whatever, efficient lighting to illuminate pathways. And giving the, given that so many businesses are installing these string lights, we're just getting a lot of that in our community, and I would like to see it varied a little bit. I think there are other ways to illuminate for safety that would coordinate with the string lights that are on the gable and the, yeah, the gable of the front of the building. And that's, that's consistent with what we have in the area, really, is outlining the architectural features. You know, I appreciate, I really am pulled in two ways, so I'm interested to hear what the rest of you say, of course, as far as what we can do to illuminate this for safety. Now, staff's recommendation is to remove, for instance, the lower string of two along the west, if you look at figure five. We could argue that keeping that lower string actually provides better path lighting. It might be a little more subtle than keeping the upper row, but actually, my inclination is to not allow any lighting on any of the fences or balustrades, because it's, it's so much different than what we have existing in the surrounding area. So those are my thoughts. So I'll open it up for the rest of you to comment. What do you think, does anybody have an opinion about that?
Yeah, so actually, I misread this when I was reading the, I thought we were, I did not understand that it was just removing the lower portion. I was thinking it meant lower rail, like the whole side on the bottom. So I'm reinterpreting this in my head, basically, right now, is what I'm saying. And so when I think of that, then my first inclination is, yes, I do think that the lower on the ground, you're saying you like that, but I actually don't like that. I think just the upper one is sufficient, and I think the lower one has more opportunity for breakage and stepping and things like that that could lead to more problems with both look and safety. But I'm also, I also do wish the applicant was here, because I was also a little confused about the lighting on the left-hand side versus, it's not really illuminating the walking path. And so when I looked at it, it didn't really highlight to me what we're, what we're saying we want to highlight with the string lighting. So I do like the look of it. I'm in favor of approving string lighting for them, but I do wish they were here to speak to their motivation behind that and why the right-hand side is totally blank when that's the seating area. So it's not even really highlighting a business thing that they offer, so it confused me. The lighting confused me of placement of its purpose.
When you say the right, you're talking about the balustrade?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the seating area. There's a fence that goes along it.
By the umbrella.
On the right-hand side of the walkway, if you're walking towards the building. There's no lighting there, and to me, that is sort of what we want to illuminate. Right now, it's illuminating rocks in the driveway. And so my inclination originally, even now rereading it, would have been to move that left lighting on the fence over to the right-hand side to illuminate their seating area and highlight that they offer that, and then remove, now I'm seeing that's the lower row thing. So I also am inclined to have them remove the lower row, because I think the hanging down lights from the fence on the deck provide enough safety lighting for someone to walk along the side of the building right there, in combination with the ones on the, on the building itself. So I guess that's, I don't know if I actually made all of my point, like, I'm in support of the string lighting. I'm really almost inclined to, like, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable making a decision without the applicant here, asking them if that's an option or interest to them to move it without just removing it, because to me, my inclination is kind of removal. So anyway, I'll let others speak, but that's sort of where I landed. I don't understand the placement of it, and if they could speak to it, then I feel more comfortable.
Something that occurs to me, you know, what you mentioned, I see now, on figure two, if you look at the lower one of four on the left, that really does show what you're talking about, how it doesn't illuminate those picnic tables that we see on the right. There's just a little string on the balustrade of the building. And, you know, I'm not aware of any complaints about safety or lighting over on the left-hand side of the building. You know, I don't know if the city's received complaints about that, so I'm with you, and I'm not really sure what it is they're trying to achieve. I think that the decorative lighting on the structure itself is enough to, you know, call attention and decorate the building, but all these other lights, the two rows on the left of the fence, and they go all the way to the back, yeah, is that really improving safety and access to the business? Or is it just, it was easy to hang them over there? You know, it is our prerogative. We can impose, you know, them placing the lighting where we see fit, but, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, that we, we're not comfortable doing that without them here to respond. For my part, I would prefer, as I said, I'd prefer to see a new kind of lighting that's specific to lighting the pathways. There are better ways to do that than with the string lighting. The string lighting is intended to highlight architectural feeding, features. Its associated benefit is, you know, illuminating the surrounding area, improving safety somewhat, but there are other ways to do that. So, but they're not here to answer to that, unfortunately.
If staff might, you can continue the item. You can direct staff to reach out to the applicant and request specific information.
Sure.
Provide for the next meeting, if you feel you can't make a decision tonight. We can continue the item to date certain.
Well, at this point, I'll, you know, I'll poll the other members. Would you like to hear from the applicant on options?
Yes.
Or would you rather move forward and do a straight-up denial or approval?
I would rather do that. Plus, I feel uncomfortable making the decision based on photographs, where I have no idea how accurate they are in representing the situation.
And I'd like to hear how they feel about installing options.
Light bulbs are going to look a lot brighter when they're close to the camera. When you look at this photograph, one of the things it illustrates is it's very hard for the city to make arguments against string lighting, when we use string lighting throughout Main Street, as is depicted here in front of the old building.
You can kind of see on figure three, what you're talking about, the city's decorative lighting over their intersection.
The one I was thinking of is on page five, up on the upper left. You can see in front of the old ICE building.
Right.
The string lights.
That's the city's lighting there.
And we can't tell which is brighter. The other kind of solution is that, let's just say, if we're troubled by the lights at the bottom, because we think they're too bright, then one of the solutions is you come up with a lower wattage or that has more limited lumens, because our objective is two things. Again, energy conservation, but it's safety, and that's a big concern. So I feel really uncomfortable making decisions based on the photographs, because they don't tell the whole story. It is one of my concerns. And I will tell you, what's really nice is if you compare this to the last one, you have a building that was constructed in the 1950s, and you have here one that's in the 1850s, and they both look very attractive. One of the things that is a third element to the design is this, this warm bulbs kind of brings them all together. There's a feel, an old-town feeling in the city that's kind of nice. And when we see the illustration for both this and the previous tenant, those lights are really solid. They're really well-made. They're made for all weather concerns, and that's a nice factor, is that safety. But yes, I do share your concerns about making a decision tonight. And I guess I want to ask the staff, are those lights on now?
I'm not sure. I don't know if they're open today.
Oh.
If they are.
We can do a site visit.
Yeah.
Certainly within our purview to do a site visit after dark, to see what it looks like in person.
Sure.
Well, can we get a motion for continuance?
I motion to continue.
This item to, can we do a date certain, or?
I would recommend date certain. That way, we don't have to renotice. I would suggest, in order to communicate with the applicant, no earlier than April 15th.
April 15th?
Not the next meeting, but the meeting after.
Okay, so that's your motion to continue this until April 15th?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Stratton. All right. Please call the roll, the vote.
Sorry, I will have everyone's names written down. Okay, so Cherkinie?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
All right, so we've continued this motion, so I need some information from staff. Is a continuance appealable?
Generally not.
No, okay, so we will take this matter up again on April 15th, and hopefully the applicant or the representative can be here to answer our questions. Thank you all. Moving on to item 11, on our agenda, which is continue items, and we have none. So now we get down to new business. Item 12, 12.1 is election of officers for 2025, and that includes the chair and vice chair. Per Article 5B of the Planning Commission bylaws, at the first regular meeting on or after March 1st, the commissioners shall elect officers of chair and vice chair for one-year terms. The chair and vice chair shall take office at the following meeting. Per Article 7G of the Commission bylaws, there must be five members present at the meeting to elect officers, otherwise the matter will be continued to the next regular meeting. So thank you all for being here tonight. We have been in a situation where the first meeting after March 1st, we did not have all five members present, and so we kind of got into a long, drawn-out, you know, eventually, half a year through, we got around to taking care of this. So this is good housekeeping. I'll just say right now, I have enjoyed being the chair, and we have new members present, and I'll just like to tell you all that I am quite willing to continue to serve in that, if you would be willing and see fit to continue me in this position of chair.
I'll make the formal nomination for you to be chair for the 20, for the fall, next year.
Thank you. Thank you for that vote of confidence. So we have a motion from Ms. Lepper. A second?
A second.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester. So is this general consent or roll call? Let's do, let's call the roll.
I doubt roll call.
Let's do, let's do the roll call. Maybe you'll get practice.
Yeah. Cherkinie, I'm sorry, yeah, Cherkinie.
Well, let's see, should I have, aye?
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
Thank you all. I appreciate that. And now for vice chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Lepper. She has served as chair and did a very good job, but I know that you're very busy in personal life, as well as a lot of other activities and volunteer work as well. So I would like to nominate you, Amy Lepper, as vice chair for.
I will accept the nomination.
So we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Kinney and a second by Stratton. Please call the roll.
Cherkinie?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
All right. Very good. It's nice to take care of that in short order. So we'll move on to item 12.2, which is a review and amendment of Planning Commission bylaws. So at this time, it's our opportunity for planning commissioners to review and recommend amendments to the bylaws per Article 7G of the Planning Commission bylaws. All five members must be present to vote, repeal, amend, or add to the bylaws. And there is a summary in our packet, and I'll turn this over to you, Ms. Hunter, to give us a quick summary of that.
Sure. So the bylaws last came before the commission on May 2nd, 2023, where amendments were proposed by the commission. These amendments, which are provided in attachment two, were reviewed by both staff and the city attorney, and unfortunately, due to staff load during 2024, we were just unable to bring them back to you until now. So for section 7A of the bylaws, the proposed amendments specifically included reference to the Brown Act and Roberts' Rules of Order. Staff has included a summary sheet outlining Roberts' rules in attachment three. Of note, the addition of Roberts' rules may result in a more complicated meeting. So all members of the commission, as well as staff, would be required to be educated in Roberts' rules and be able to, anyway. So as such, staff recommends that the commission not include reference to Roberts' Rules of Order. However, the commission may consider other options, remove the reference, or adopt as proposed. Items 7B, 7D, and 8A included modification Items 7B, 7D, and 8A included modifications requiring a majority vote to pass all motions. This requirement would likely result in more continued or failed items, so similarly, staff would recommend not adopting that change. As part of their review, the city attorney also noted concerns with 7G and 8D. These didn't have changes, but it was flagged. So 7G is the requirement to have all five members of the commission present to vote on officers or to amend the bylaws. If a vacancy occurs on the commission, this rule prohibits the commission from completing this business until the vacancy is filled, which can last quite a while. 8D provides language on steps for an application that fails to be approved or denied by the by the commission or council. Per the city attorney, a tie is considered a denial of the application. We can get into sticky situations with state law. And so it is recommended that 8D be amended to clearly state that a tie vote means a denial. That's the, that's the summary.
That a tie vote means, okay. Okay. Thank you for that summary. And so this is, now, these are chain, okay, I'll start off. I was very confused at the, what the city attorney reviewed. What I had in my files was actually something much different, I believe. Amy, this, this is your document. It's redlined, it's dated 5/1/2023, and it doesn't contain the changes that the city attorney considered. So my first question for staff is the language of 7A, B, D, and 8A, where, who proposed those? Am I just not remembering? Was this under discussion? And so this is what we, as a commission, proposed?
This was an amalgamation. It was supposed to be an amalgamation of all the commissioners' changes. So Commissioner Lepper did provide a redlined copy at the meeting. But I believe Commissioner Friend and Commissioner, well, now council member Carter, also provided changes. I believe Commissioner Friend recommended Roberts Rules of Order.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. I, it should.
I think that that's all the clarification I need. And I just didn't have a, a text copy of that.
You were making me think I wrote something that I do not remember. I was like, did I write that? Did I do that?
Yeah, I've been carrying this redlined copy around for, for two years.
This document included, as attachment two, was what was reviewed by the city attorney. I, I made sure to print out, not including her comments, so I can tell you, this is what she looked at.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for making it clear in my mind. So, so we have staff report, and as I read through this and I read the comments from our city attorney, I'm in agreement with her, her analysis. We have not routinely invoked Roberts Rules, and on the rare times that we have, I'm not sure that we followed the recommended procedures. As I, I read through the attachment that you provided, and on the few times I think that we've actually, you know, used those terms, we didn't follow through on applying them. And so the statement that addition of Roberts Rules may result in more complicated meetings, and each commissioner would be required to become familiar with them, you know, it's, it's a good intellectual exercise. I, in our past meetings, we didn't use them. I have not seen really a need for them. Our bylaws really cover most of the administrative procedural things that we routinely undertake. So I am not inclined to adopt or include Roberts Rules of Order at all in our bylaws. Moving on to, I'll just work through your staff memo, and I'll open up to everyone else's comments. Again, the changing the, our definition and use of a quorum, in 7B, a majority vote of the total commission required to pass all motions and resolutions, we, you know, tonight notwithstanding, we often have not have the full commission, and on some issues, we only had three members present. And, you know, we have the requirement to expedite. When an applicant comes to the city, it's our responsibility to deal with that as quickly as possible. And if we invoked a total commission for every vote, total membership, I really think we would get bogged down quickly. And we would then be in violation of, you know, our imperative to move projects along. So again, I am not in favor of changing the definition of a quorum or the recommended change that is highlighted in 7B or D. And then, again, the attorney's comments, including 8A, every official act taken by the commission shall be by resolution or motion adopted by the affirmative vote of the majority of the members constituting a quorum. I, I think we should keep that line. Again, we, you know, we are consistently using the word quorum. I don't agree with changing that. You know, the five members present to vote on election of officers, we, we got through it, but when Ryan Carter had to resign and took his post with the city council, that left us with four. We, and I remember Michael Friend commenting one night, you know, he, I would, I have been chair, so what happens when, you know, Chris gets hit by a bus? What do we do? Well, it's actually in our bylaws. We, you know, we had that situation arisen, we, we could have had a chair pro tem. So we're covered by the bylaws, but it did kind of put us in a jam that we didn't nominate an official vice chair. This is the way we've had it for, for years, have five members present to vote on officers and repeal, amend, and bylaws. So that I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion about. I could go either way. Now, let's get to eight. And actually, I think that's 8C in our bylaws. I made a note here, the event of a formal application failing to be either approved or denied, commission, the application will be, right. I, I think it is, I like, again, this recommendation that we just consider that denied. If it's a tie vote, then it's denied, and then the applicant can appeal that denial to the city council, should they choose. That makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. I have a few other comments on a couple of other changes in the bylaws, kind of based on what Amy Lepper provided to us in May of 2023. But those are my thoughts on this staff memo. So I'd like to hear what the rest of you think about either adopting or rejecting these proposed changes.
I guess one observation is that Michael Friend had 20 years of experience with the body, and so I think I give some weight to that. I'd also note that tonight, we did use and do use Roberts Rules of Order, just as the city council does. We made motions, we seconded motions, I accepted your friendly amendment. All of those are consistent with Roberts Rules of Order. Unfortunately, we have a cheat sheet that makes it easy to follow. So I think that for consistency, I'd follow what the city council does, the Board of Advisors does, and other legislative bodies. It's not that complicated. It doesn't have to be a real minefield. So I guess that's why I would, I would put some weight towards, towards that. When it comes to a tie vote, you know, tonight, we had an instance where we moved to continue, so that doesn't count as a denial. And if we had a situation where it was a split vote, it could be, again, jointly agreeing to continue it and maybe make some difference when it came back. So those are just some observations I'd offer.
Okay. So I, I pretty much landed in agreement with the changes that you discussed, Chris, in terms of Robert Rules of Order. I understand what you're saying, that we do loosely follow it, but I am hesitant to tie us to that formally, when I think it could unnecessarily complicate things, and if we go out of line with it, I think it could just be a little hairy. I just don't see the necessity of, of incorporating that into our bylaws. I think we are held by, you know, the Brown Act is our overarching thing, separate, anyway. Sorry. So I do think we should remove the Roberts Rule of Order. I agree on 7B that we could, that we should go with a quorum, not the total commission, because I agree that if someone's out for sickness or some temporary thing, it could really hold up decisions for the public and for our community. So I'm inclined to sit with the quorum as well and reinstitute on 8A constituting a quorum. I am inclined to have the five members present for the election of officers, just because I think it is a good precedent to have, and I think if we really got into a hairy situation, that it could be addressed one way or another. So I'm inclined to leave 7G as is. And in regards to 8C, I also think it should be an automatic denial if there is a tie, and that it should be appealable to the city, because I think it could come, if it's a tie, I would hate for it to go to automatic approval without full, everyone being really on board. And so my preference would be for it to be denied and then either be reapplied or appealed to the city council in that case. So I'm in agreeance that a tie means automatic denial. I think I covered everything. Okay.
Well, I, I also agree that I don't think that we need to specify the Roberts Rules of Order here in this section of the bylaws. I did want to point out that under other, it does say that whenever there's a question of procedure, that we would follow that. So it is already referenced, it's just not, we don't have to strictly adhere to it for all procedures unless we run into an issue.
And that's under which bylaw?
Article 11.
11.
E.
Yes, 11E. There, right. I remember seeing it in there. Okay.
And, excuse me, I also agree that we should not change the definition of the quorum and not require the majority vote of the total commission. I do think that for 7G, I thi, I think that, you know, it should be all members in, all members, not counting, not specifying the number of members present to vote on the election of the officers and to repeal.
Oh.
And I need to think about C or 8C.
That it's, the application is considered denied?
No, yep, I agree that it needs to be, that it should be considered denied if there's a tie. So, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask you to clarify real quickly? So on 7G, would your, would your suggestion be to say something like, all commission members must be present?
Yes.
Great.
I agree with all the discussion thus far, including not implementing the Roberts Rule of Order for reasons already stated. But additionally, I think procedurally, it could open us up for a lot of superficial challenges that would just become pretty inefficient if folks wanted to constantly come back and challenge a minor error. But yeah, other than that, I, I agree, changing 7G to all the, the active members must be present, and agree with 8D as written. I did have a quick question. Are we only talking about memo right now, or can I ask something about the bylaw as written?
I think we.
It's, it's open for your.
Yeah, go ahead.
And discussion.
I appreciate, I'll just say, I appreciate all of you speaking to this, and it sounds like Kirk Smith's comments, notwithstanding, the four of us are in agreement to, except for that one change for 7G, all commission members must be present for election. We want to keep our bylaws as written. So, yeah, please, go ahead. Other concerns you had about our existing bylaws?
And this is a really easy one. First sentence, under Article 1, just adding City of Plasterville Planning Commission. Right now, it just says City of. On the, at least on the redlined version.
We have a couple copies here.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that was in our staff packet.
That was a very good catch.
Not sure which one's the final version, but just wanted to make sure it's the City of.
So that, it says last revised action taken on TBD.
Got it.
Right. Okay, so I see what.
Thank you.
And then I would just say, we do have a member of the public who will most likely want to comment.
I'm sorry?
We, we do want to make sure it's open to public.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But I, I thought we would air our concerns and then open it up to the public for comment before we took any kind of official action. One, one change I think it is important for us to consider is, and this is over Article Current, our current bylaws do not include the word continue, which is something that we just got through doing. 10, F3. Yes, so it currently reads, to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or take under advisement. That's our acts under, after we have the agenda item. Now, it could be that, as far as an attorney's concerned, when you say take under advisement, does that include continue the item? But to me, reading the bylaws, I think we should specifically say that one of the acts that we can take is, oh, I'm, I didn't even see it, close or continue. To approve, conditionally approve, my bad. Honestly, I was looking under, another copy where it had been included down there?
I would, I would love the opportunity to maybe incorporate these changes and then read through these one more time before we approve them, so that we have a clean copy. Because like I said, I'm, I'm not, it's been two years since I looked at it. I had just had a baby when I did it, too, so gosh knows what my brain was, and you know, I'm a word nerd. So I would, I would really like to, to see these again, a one clean copy with the attorney's changes incorporated, and a final copy so that I just can, can see. Is that an option for us, or is anyone opposed to that?
Were you going to do it, or were you going to have staff do it?
Mm-hmm. I would like staff to incorporate the, the changes we've discussed tonight, removing the Roberts Rules of Order, discussing the quorum amount, reinstituting the, constituting a quorum, changing 7G to say all active commission members must be present to vote on the election of officers, and then 8C to include the fact that it's clearly considered denied, if it's not there. If you could incorporate those changes, and then we get a clean copy without, I don't know, maybe without highlighted changes, so that we can just read through them cleanly and not have it be different, I don't know if that's an option, but that's what would be my preference before.
But before we make that request, I want to invite Mr. Drobish back up to the podium in case he has a comment on this item of the bylaws, seeing as how he's the only one in the public.
Four, four times to the podium in one night. Yes, I, I absolutely agree to continue it and clean it up. I am looking through all these different versions going, you know, when you're looking at a draft, and then have that ghost draft through it. I want the version that is legal, the existing legal version, so I can apples to oranges or whatever we're doing here. So that's a request, is the existing version and a list of proposed changes. Yes, a. the existing version and a list of proposed changes. Yes, a tie is a denial by state law, I believe. So I would keep it, the majority of the quorum, which is also a legal term. I mean, you have five members, so the quorum's three, majority's a two, one, it passes. I would, I prefer for election of officers, all five. But I would break out that 11F and do bylaws, changes at a four-fifths.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, bylaws changes?
I would break out 11F, where it says, officers and bylaws require all five. I would break it out. Election of officers, all five, because it usually happens right in the spring, right after reappointment. It's easy. And then when you have a missing member, then, and bylaws need to be changed, a four-fifths vote gives you, I wouldn't even mind a majority vote, three, two. But a four-fifths vote would be, or, you know what I'm saying, is allow for a missing member to, to do bylaws, changes. I'd like to keep Roberts Rules. I think that version, or was it a 10 or 11? I don't know which version to look at, but the.
It's 11?
It, it does. So you say, you could place them in order. These bylaws govern first, and any questions, I believe that line that was referenced earlier says, in that, a need for a question, then Roberts Rules work as cleanup. Otherwise, you're going to have to like quadruple the length of this document to put in this, basically this cheat sheet. You're just gonna, it's so much easier. Most people have no idea about Roberts Rules. So, you know, you just use the cheat sheet as your basic version, and it's going to cover all your business. I would also like to see, to add a clause for calling of a vote for officers outside the usual one-year springtime, if you needed to, because it doesn't, it's not clear to me, like, say, the chair or vice was no longer here. It seems to me that the bylaws do allow you then to, at the next meeting, vote to, to replace that person. I don't know if you spell it out, that that election can happen any time of the year, with the five vote, or the four vote, however you deem. Because I think it says at the beginning of each meeting, that if, if there's a missing member, then, then you have your poll for that evening. But it doesn't really specify then that that elected new person for that meeting serves the rest of the year.
No, it's, it's for that meeting only, the chair pro temp.
Yeah. So the chair pro temp would.
Yeah, that's nine, 9D specifies.
If you lost your chair or your vice, then you're going to have to do that at every meeting.
Mm-hmm. Right. In that event, yeah. Hasn't come up, but, you know, right.
But yeah, I agree to tabling it, and just, you know, to the adopted version, and then a list of proposed, proposed changes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your insights and sharing that with us.
If staff might, there is actually a sentence in 5B that says, outside of the March 1st date, there is vacancies shall be filled in the same manner at the regular meeting immediately following the time the vacancy occurs. So there is a path for filling vacancies. So you have to do pro temp every time.
Okay. But, so in our, our recent experience with Ryan Carter moving over to city council, city council did not, you know, it was such a short time, they did not do interviews and appoint a replacement planning commissioner. So, yeah, you know, if that had happened earlier in his term, without, yeah, then they would have, and they have in that, in the past, done that, gone through the recruiting process. So, yeah, you know, we, we are covered in, in that eventuality.
I still do like the suggestion of all active commission members must be present to vote on the election. I think that covers, I like the taking the five out, and, but saying all active members. Just for that one specifically, although we're talking about how it's covered elsewhere, but just wording on that one, if the city attorney is amenable to that, I thought it was a really good suggestion for not, not tying us into five people, but saying all active commission members must be present.
Well, that would only change if city council took action to increase the size of the planning commission. At that point, then everything, you know, that would, that would be a big change in the city within.
But if like, no one is applying for planning commission, and we cannot find a fifth person, no one wants to sit up here in this exciting room up here, then we, we couldn't be functioning at four, which is still fine, because we have our quorum of our total membership body. But, but I like her idea of removing the five on there and saying all active, so that we are all allowed to vote. If it's only four of us, then that's okay, that's considered. We're not like, now we need to find that fifth person, and then we all have to be here, and then we can vote. I think that gets way harder.
Would you, could we consider, or limit that just to election of officers, and then keep five to repeal, amend, or add bylaws? Because I honestly, you know, our bylaws have served us really quite well. And so amendments aren't, shouldn't be necessary. But in the event that they are.
I always lean in worst-case scenario, right? You have three people who come on and are trying, have an agenda. I mean, it's real, right? And they come in, and they take over and decide that they want to change these bylaws, and they have the ability to vote on that. And so that's why I think with both bylaws and election, I'm inclined to say that all members, all active members must be present. Not necessarily say five, but say all active members, because it could change down the line, and then we have to catch that. So what if they do make us a seven-person body, and then we have to go in and make sure that that is actively there?
Well, there's, yeah, that would be incumbent on the, the city and city attorney.
Right, right.
That would not really be.
Not us, but I'm saying, again, it's something to manage for, for anyone to manage for, not us. But for anyone to manage for that in the bylaws. So that's why I said, I think all active commission members covers us in any scenario that we, we encounter.
Interesting.
I'm actually going to change my opinion on what I said for that one, because, as you said, imagining the worst-case scenario, there is a situation where two people, or there are two vacancies on the board, and the three existing members could just elect the president for the next year. And at this point, we want to have that full five membership before any of those sorts of decisions are made, right? So I don't know if there's a different language, where it's not necessarily five, but.
The full commission?
Something about like, if it's a temporary vacancy, or, like, can't act too quickly.
Could you, since this was actually from the attorney, could you just confer with her and see what her response is to us wanting to remove the number five, and say, that is a terrible idea, or that's totally fine, it's going to have zero impact on the future of things? Just because those were ones that she pulled out, and so I'm wanting, I know her only addition was the five and the the. But since we're, we're talking about that, that would be a request of mine to have her eye on it.
And do we need to take formal action, or is our discussion enough, giving direction for you to, to move forward with the new draft?
I think we want a motion to continue it. And you can, you can provide a date, or, or a timeframe for us to bring it back to you.
Okay.
Because I don't think this has to be date certain. It's just the regular 72-hour notice.
Because, you know, we ran across this the last time. Availability of the city attorney, I think she actually was not available for some time, and that's kind of why this got.
I think it was a mix of the city attorney and city staff. So.
Okay. So a timeframe might be, might be good. But in, in the motion, do you need us to specifically go through these amendments, or have we given you sufficient information to, to the new draft?
I think the gist of what you're asking, you don't have to get into specifics, just that you would like staff to, to come back after speaking with the city attorney with a draft showing both the existing and the proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, so I'd like, I would entertain a motion to do just that, to continue this item, in a date range, and then with further advice of the city attorney, and then provide us with updated drafts for our review.
You can make the motion.
I can, I can make that motion?
Say, I made the motion. You just did.
Okay, what I said.
I'll second that fantastic motion.
So whatever I said, and Lepper is our second. So we have motion, a second.
Date range.
As I say, is there a date range?
Of two months.
That's what I was thinking.
Two months, so it's April. So, yeah. Perhaps if we have two meetings in, in May, if, if it's, if it's ready.
Meeting in May? Is that what you're thinking?
Second meeting in May.
I'll second your amendment to the second meeting in May. Thank you.
All right. Very, very much, very messy. Please call the roll. I'll call the vote.
Whoops, caught me. Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
Very, very messy. But I think, yeah, we're going to be better off because of this discussion. Appreciate everyone's insight. Now, we'll move on to 12.3, the 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, Cycle 6. This is a receive and file of the 2024 Annual Housing Element. And Ms. Hunter, you do have a brief staff report for us. And before you get underway, I don't want, I don't, it would be remiss if I didn't thank you for your hard work on this. It's a lot of detail. I realize that it's kind of, there's some auto-fill things, I realized toward the end of it. But it's a lot of work, is very technical, and is very detail-oriented, and I appreciate your hard work. So I'll turn it over to you for the staff report.
Thank you. So state law requires cities and counties to prepare an annual report on the status of the implementation of their housing element by the, by April 1st of each year, which we are actually on schedule for this year. The annual report must be submitted to city council, the governor's office of planning and research, or ORP, and Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. Now, HCD developed a standardized progress report form for municipalities statewide to utilize for annual reporting purposes. The spreadsheet form was reproduced at size to generate copies for the commission. And I do apologize, I know some of it may be difficult to read, very small font. But to summarize, in 2024, there was a total of 19 dwelling unit applications received by the Development Services Department, including 10 single-family dwellings, eight accessory dwelling units, and one demolition permit. There were 29 dwelling unit permits issued, including 12 ADUs, 15 single-family dwellings, one multifamily dwelling, which of note was the Mallard Affordable Housing Project, and one demolition permit. Thirty-three dwelling unit permits were final. Out of the 33 permits, none were within the very low or low-income category. All were categorized as moderate or above moderate. However, staff has proposed to complete a survey of comparable units in 2027, two years prior to the end of the planning period, to really determine the affordability of all constructed units. This is in particular for ADUs. We, we have to do a study to make sure that the rate is correct. The 33 final permits included 10 ADUs, 21 single-family dwellings, and one duplex. Of note, most of the single-family dwellings are part of the cottonwood phases four and six, or Sutter's Ridge. So staff is asking the commission to receive the annual progress report for 2024, and to direct staff to submit the report to city council. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. And for our two new members, I don't know if you've, have you ever looked at one of these reports in your professional work as a?
Not specifically this report, but I'm familiar with some of the.
Okay, some of the requirements. And Catherine, I don't know if you've looked at one of these reports regarding our housing numbers, but we, we get these annually, and you'll become more familiar with it. I think, you know, the clear reporting of this, and your summary, also, you know, highlights that the city is doing everything it can. We are in compliance, we are providing housing based on our RENA numbers, and to the extent that, you know, we haven't met our goals, it's that, you know, funding's just not available, or builders aren't available to, you know, construct certain types of housing that the analysis shows the city must provide. The, the city is not in the business of actually constructing houses, but we have, you know, done our job as far as providing space, and to the extent possible, encouraging builders to come to our community to provide these structures. So that comes across very clearly in this report. So again, I thank you for your, your hard work, your summarizing of all this analysis for us. And anyone else have comments about it?
I just had a couple of notes in the narrative, Table D, just some really small, minor narrative things. One of them is literally a typo on infill development. Clementine is spelled wrong in that huge paragraph one. Number two, second one, infill development sites, the second time clementine is spelled differently than the first time. The, the second one I saw was, you know, I said I'm a word nerd, I'm not kidding. No, the second one was the next box. At the end of it, it says, completion of professional services is anticipated in 2023. So just.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's a, yes, staff will update that.
Yeah, either update or just, I don't know. I just noticed it was, seemed outdated. Same thing is on page three, there's two references, one in self-help housing. The city did not facilitate self-help housing during 2023. You see that? And then the last one, housing rehabilitation, same thing. Okay. And that is all I saw. And great job, always. Yeah, you do amazing work, and we really, really appreciate you.
Anyone else have a comment on the housing element? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to.
Was that in the motion to ask that it be received and move it on to the council?
Yes. So we would want to open it up for, oh, I guess.
If any, to be forwarded. Do we need to take?
We would need a motion, yes.
Oh, we do? I thought it just went to city council.
We're, we're asking you to direct staff to take it to.
Okay. So. Would you like to make that?
I move that we receive the report that's been submitted to us. He's gone.
So I was going to say, public comment, I guess you're right.
I'm sorry. Hold on, Kurt.
My bad, my bad.
Public comment. Okay, go ahead.
Mike, are you out there?
Yeah.
So, we move that we receive this report and direct the staff to submit the 2024 Annual Housing Element Progress Report for the 2021 to 2029 housing elements to the city council. And with that, I ask for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes 5O. All right, so procedures are in place and being followed. Very good. Yeah, when I see you receiving file, you know, I'm done with it.
That's what I thought, too.
Very good. So, 13 matters from commissioners and staff. We'll go to 13.1, staff reports, staff to update those in attendance, status of upcoming meetings, and so on. Ms. Hunter?
We are anticipating a meeting on April 1st.
Seriously?
It's not a joke, is it?
Not a joke.
And then again, on the 15th.
Put on some ch.
It just.
Make me get all dressed up and just show up here.
And then lights out. Okay, so, next meeting. All right. Anything else, Ms. Hunter?
Is it from staff?
Okay. And Mr. Cahill, any? Okay. All right. Planning Commission matters. This is for us to update other members regarding subcommittee work, and so on. I'll open up, or start us off on this. I think as both our two new members are hopefully aware, we are working on developing a guideline for planning commission use to more clearly use the existing ordinance and the Secretary of Interior Standards. use the existing ordinance and the secretary of interior standards for historic buildings. So that work is in process, it's been in process for quite some time, and since we had such a full agenda, you know, I'm glad, Ms. Hunter, you didn't add a specific item for that, but we need to keep that going. I think we're very close to, you know, coming up with a good list. I've been working on this, and Amy Lepper's been working on it, and she and I had a long discussion about it recently, and so we are both committed to moving forward. I also, yeah, I just, I feel like I would want to make sure that the two new members have had a chance to review documents and memos that have been submitted and discussed by this body before, before we take our next step. So that's where I would prefer to leave it tonight, so a little bit of homework for both of you, you may have already undertaken it. And when Amy and I talked about this a day ago or so, you said you had found a lot of information on our city's website, and she shared that with me, and I'll send it to you, Kristen, for distribution to the rest of the commission. So there's a lot of things kind of in process right now, but one thing I want to remind us all is that because we have to do all of our deliberations in public with mics on, audience present, any communications that you would like to share with the commission need to go to Kristen Hunter, and then she will be our clearinghouse. So Amy, I'll ask you to share that list of, they were individual pages that you found within our own website that have valuable information for us to take into consideration. For my part, I think I want to update some recommendations that I provided at a previous meeting, so again, I'll provide that to you, Kristen, and I think, since you handle our agenda, when you find that we don't have quite so much business, other business to take care of, perhaps you can then compile all that and put it in an agenda packet, and we can take it up at that meeting, is that-
We can certainly do that. I mean, if you would like to try to have it on April 1st, I can say we just have one item, it-
Oh, we do have a light agenda on April 1st?
It's one item, it's grocery outlet, so it may be a little bit more discussion, but it, if you would like to have a discussion, you can direct staff to include some language similar to what we had at the last meeting for 13, 2.1.
Okay, let's, that sounds like a good approach. So let's include that on our, at our next meeting, and we won't have the business of election of officers, bylaws, and we only have one public hearing, so we'll have plenty of time to undertake that. Fair enough?
I guess this is a question I would ask.
Go ahead.
Is, as I understand it, what we're involved in doing is quasi-legislative, it's not quasi-judicatory, where we're making a decision on application. So it's a legislative matter, so it's just like a legislator, you can discuss among yourselves, you can discuss with the public, and that's helpful to be able to get information. So the two of you have discussed these things, it's perfectly fine to share with us what you're talking about when you say there's things on the website. The thing I want to share with you is what our committee did for two years, and one of them, which was to look at Grass Valley, and I'll provide you the citation, because there must have been a misunderstanding, because what I was referring to was something that had been discussed at great length at the meetings with even the former staff director liking the idea. It's just three pages, which is less work in terms of cost than what it would take for the staff to make these changes on the bylaws. So I'll present that to all of you to look at, Grass Valley, because there's a lot of things that are very intriguing about it. The other thing I'd suggest for you is that April 18th, I believe, is the date for the Elder County Historical Society's giving a tour of a couple historic districts, you're all invited. And it's very helpful, because you'll see the actual fruits of this work, where the city has, 30 years ago, made a compilation of all the various properties. What Grass Valley did is they provide you with a self-guided tour, where you can go and do that, and it's kind of nice, because people take pride in it and in their homes. So one of the instruments that's on the Grass Valley page is just one page, and it tells you how you can go find information about the history of your building. So that might be helpful if you're available on April 18th.
Okay.
And all that to say is that, yeah, Chris and I talked about this in the context of a larger conversation of, I've been going on, I'm reaching out to Jackie Now, actually, I've connected with Jackie Now about working on the website and the messaging together, because that was sort of what I had agreed to take on, and so what I have come up with, and didn't share in time for today, because I want to flesh it out a little bit more, but I went on our city website, and I typed in the word historic into our search bar, and I found so much information on so many different pages. So what I'm trying to do right now, and the document that she's referencing is basically a huge links list of things that are on our website now, that are informative and feed into this discussion, but are spread and very disjointed and hard to find. So my goal is, as I showed you guys at that previous discussion, the city of Redlands was the example that I used, but it's in line with what you're talking about, too, really pulling all of the existing information that we have. I found documents that I hadn't seen before, that I'd love to read through and more in-depth, and putting that all into a big bucket and figuring out what needs to be more flushed out, what actually is already there, and what will be the most beneficial for us to have highlighted on our website, on one landing page is what I envision it as, that will speak to visitors, to homeowners, to property people, just anyone, real estate agents kind of are pointing for our historic resources. So that's what I'm doing. I will try to make that document a little bit more flushed out by the April 1st one, but I'm more than happy to share what I have now. So I'll send that, just so I can get it in for public noticing, and then beyond that, that is just, when I have the time and capacity, I'm just sitting down and digging in in different ways to find all of the paths that currently exist, and then cohesed them together, so that we have one thing, so that eventually, when we do do the workshop and things, we have one place to point anyone to, is my vision, if you will. So that's the work that I've been doing on my side.
What I think is the brilliance of our commission is it provides a lot of different talent, that, you know, we all have strengths and limitations. So if you ever want something improved, do not ever ask me, that's not my specialty. I'm dyslexic, I'll mess it up every time.
Well, if you ever want something improved, I nerd out on it.
I know who to call.
Even an extensive spreadsheet.
Yes, spreadsheets and Word docs are my game.
Okay, very good. Any other matters from our new planning commissioners? So-
See, this was easy, wasn't it?
Right, okay. Thank you all, good work, and it is 8:39, and we stand adjourned until April 1st.